So, uh, welcome to the planning board meeting for August twenty first, twenty twenty four. Begin with the pro-call of Paul.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Peter Roddick.
Here.
Kelly Paulson is not here. Mr. Bruce Davis is not here. Brian Malcolm.
Here.
We have one, two. We have six members present. And because we have people in the land will be, uh, sitting in. It's a, it's a vote. Do special things. Okay, the first, um, application is the application of K R A nominee trust. Free Center Street for a special permit. And this is for the, for the.
Hi, Tiffany Barfali in Board and Department.
Uh, Keaton Abloh. Thirty-six Water Street.
So Free Center Street is in the downtown overlay district. For approval to the short-term rental for the three years. It's a single-family little house cottage. It's been running as a short-term rental since about twenty fifteen. We don't rent to anybody under twenty-five. We have a third-party management company. Everybody has access. They either all have neighbors or either have Keith's contact information or mine, or they have access to it. Um, next one please. So within this area, there's an inn about twenty yards away from where this short-term rental is. There's two parking lots, there's multiple restaurants, there's the newspaper, and then, um, multiple lots in the same area. So we're not kind, we're not in a residential and we're not in the downtown where the retail is. If you can keep going. So this is just the map to show you where Free Center is. The parking, it has a dedicated parking lot, that's that pink X, dedicated parking space, which is shortly further down the road. And then up at the top where you see the other circle, there's an additional parking spot if needed at thirty-six Water Street. The two properties run up to each other. Next one. So this answers all of the questions. Is it best that I go through these or one by one?
Probably best typically.
Just go through them. So it's in, it requires a special permit because it's in that downtown, um, overlay district B two. The, it brings in revenue to the town for number two, their request of use is essential or desirable for the neighborhood. It's not going to affect anything. It's been running, it's in an area where it's already businesses. Um, number three. It, there's no undue traffic. It's the same kind of traffic. It's usually one car, some people don't even come with a car. It will not overload any public works, um, drainage sewer or anything like that. It's a single-family house that has been there for a couple hundred years, I think we're at now. Um, the number five doesn't apply. Number six, the request will not impair the integrity or character of the area. No, it will not. It's a restored little house that's been there, as I said, for a couple hundred years. Um, number seven. No excess, um, strain on the neighborhood, anything like that with the character, because it's been spread into the character that's been there. It's in harmony with the rest of the intent in the area. And the last one is correct. It would be in the manner, there's nothing dangerous, there's no, we're not looking to change any, do any construction, anything like that. Next one. And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from members of?
I think I missed, I don't remember any ordinance vote for more.
Yes. Remind me. So in the, uh, in the downtown or, or, or in the business district, the business district. Um, the, uh, the ordinance prohibits the use of a, of the first floor short-term rental. And the reason for that is it's really thinking about like buildings on State Street for some.
Right.
Ground for residential use. So it's, so the ordinance, um, prohibits in the business district. This particular property is in the central business district, a little bit outside, it's not in the floor of the district. So it doesn't have that same kind of character. Mixed-use buildings.
Right, right.
And, and so the, uh, zoning board granted a very strong.
Yeah.
So that's really not, what's not before us, two things that aren't before us. Are the, the first floor use, uh, because that's been granted by the zoning board.
Okay.
And then the, the failure to apply the timing that.
Okay, yeah. I just went wrong with that.
Yeah. It only applies.
Right.
In the business district.
Yeah.
That's right. I was. Wait, did you clarify? Speaking to the great here at the.
Yeah.
Here as the, um, city council. Uh, I'd love to stand. You process. Or, you know, um, some traditional suspicions, you know, other things like. Case, the devolve. And in most cases, it's, it's the idea of. But, you say that's.
Just wondering, Andy, um, could you go over, uh, just what the, the legal review was? And if there's any concerns from your department based on what was, what the response was from the legal review?
Uh, Andy, you may have a, should be referring you back to this. Now, I mean, yeah, um, so I can say in brief, uh, so business. Um, the, there was a legal opinion that was. The record. Who else with that, uh, that was in the record of the. People when they ran. The letter itself was basically getting that the two provisions are very precious, believe one being the date of application. Um, and one being the first floor component, basically implying that both of those were used directions or planned to use. This is not important because the city council went up a year back and, um, taking out, taking away this, these. Be to grant the use. Like, could be granted by the board, but no other. From the time of certain product. And that allowance, uh, which is. Um, was adjusted. So here, the opinion might be relevant because I do have to just to figure. So, um, I don't, can't say that I agree with that. With not so much that the board, that not to say that the applicant or that the board should grant the approval of variance. But rather than, I don't believe that the first floor component. Um, but use variance is typically whether or not that use is allowed. Use allowed in the district. So given that it's not really a question of whether use is allowed in the district, it is. The question is, is it allowed spatially in that first floor structure? Me that is more akin to a dimensional requirement, being spatial relationships. But, so, uh, we did have this conversation with council that involved, I think, you know, the other question, the board obviously just like. Well, they did take that, you know, under advisement. They, they still felt that they were the grand, you know. But I, you know, I think the logic, they did not deal with the use, but obviously for that, uh, recognize or saw that the user could not give you that. Uh, I can't say that I do that in this rare, there's an instance, which is a difference. Um, I also, um, well, I don't think that, um, you know, at the end of the day, the deadline for the application is a actual use variant. Again, because the use of the district, that's the question, the question is what are the parameters? And this goes with the way that I would briefly describe that, um. The, yeah, use variance, yeah. Might be like power of operation or some other provision in there that isn't dimensional and isn't the use, being allowed in the district. It's one of the provisions that the applicant is supposed to provide. So here, um, I see the date of the application being in this other bucket essentially, um, not necessarily something the board is perfunctory for granting. Having said that, um, while I don't, you know, have an issue with a short-term renter at this location in the downtown, to be fair. This is the unique structure, um, and I don't foresee this structure, these are the near term, or the street gate have retail of first floors. Me, it doesn't seem to be in conflict with everybody, I think the council probably pressed. I got most people my understanding of it. Um, but at the same time, I knew no, in that process, it's council had for a three-year process, the offing recognition, you know, creating the parameters. That the investor category, uh, was of some sort of debate or extended time. And one of the provisions that seems to be substantive to that approval of the ordinance, provision allowing some investor units for a three-year period. Was that there was a deadline for an application, that they had taken care of the state previously and so forth, right? So those things are kind of in the ordinance. So while I do think that that is a provision, again, if I were a board of appeals member, I think that's a some of the fees that would cause pause, you know, there in that process. Anybody, because I only, only because I've been privy to that three-year process. Um, however, I also don't, can't say that I think that that's the use variance, meaning I don't think the board is perfunctory for granting it. So here we are today, um, the board's granted the relief of those provisions that the chair mentioned, and those are really on the table for here to, uh, you know, deal with per se. Because those are already decided by the whole appeals, um, in the context of the belief being granted to request at that time. And now you have the remaining typical requests for a short-term rent for a short-term unit, which is not me too in way, because this board, um, you know, the unique here of the board is, is, um, we're rarely looking at some of these permits, you know, you're triggered here because you're in the downtown, right? Yeah. Um, and you're not going to see another investor, for a unit like this, which is the, uh, if only the investor category. Here, this is really the only application you're going to see or a short-term unit as an investor, because that's what's coming to door, that's the only variant that they're granted. I, I won't speak to the board's rationale. Decision, but yeah. I don't suspect there'll be other, you know, relief granted for others down the road, of course, you know, we need to. But, uh, at the end of the day, um, you should probably be aware, you need to, you're reviewing it, it's unique, you're probably only see this one. Um, and, um, yeah, so.
Yes, thank you. One, one other, one other question, just to clarify, the, the assigned parking space that goes with this, that's located, is that one lot away from the, the building?
Can you go to number?
Yeah.
So you can see where Three Center is outlined in yellow, just beyond, um, the inn. There's three parking spaces and one of them is dedicated. It's where that big pink X is basically.
At the bottom of the screen there.
Yes, and then the second spot, if, if we had guessed that near the second spot, which we have never had to use, up at the top is thirty-six Water Street where it keeps it. And there's two spots here.
Thank you.
One question I want to raise in between, to see whether they can put it in a a special condition, which is that, um, the, it's, there was a, uh, note, the zoning determination saying only one unit is permissible for operator, this is already applied for a unit. If a different natural person is legally. Operator, owner slash trust, but please provide proof of legal authorization and operators can make contact. Now, in our zoning, and remember we discussed this, operator means a nat- natural person, owner of record, joining. Is legally authorized to act in relation to the S T R U is the owner of. Second owner may be without limitation, an individual owner, owner together with trustee of a trust, a manager of an LLC or an officer corporation. So, um, what we have here is a little different, what we have is our attorney, which is not, none of the things that listed. I, I guess it would fall under the, the petition. So, um, I would like to ensure that somebody has made a determination, like, that, uh, that the power of attorney we have here is equivalent to requirements that we have in the definition. Um, and oh, I won't, like, I won't say what I think the condition should be now, or we don't. But I think that's just an issue, it is not, it's not any of the things that we consider. And so I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's somebody where there's, it's zoning enforcement. For city attorney, legal counsel, um, has said yes. Anything else before I open this up to the public comment? In that case, I will open up the public comment, anybody who would like to speak, come forward, just come on forward to the headband and microphone.
First thing about speaking real loud, I promise.
I see that, you don't be reported.
Yes, the. It's loud, generally speaking, we brought people with really low.
Right?
You're. Uh, you're good, really good. Thank you. Everybody's sort of behind that. So, I'll be speaking loud.
Awesome. Excellent. Um, good evening, Jenny Donaville, War Two City Councilor, um, Union Matters, eighteen Jerry Street, right, of course. So, um, a couple of things I wanted to mention, uh, first, I am here in serious opposition to this applicant, um, being granted a special permit. Um, unfortunately, I was not able to make this CBA meeting, um, for reasons out of my control. However, I was able to review the entirety of the meeting regarding this application and the two variables granted. Um, so one of the things that I did hear that I would like to quickly comment on is the fact that this location is, quote unquote, not in a residential area. And I am here to, back to differ as the ward council, who is absolutely in contact with residents regularly in the ward, um, which, um, I, I also have enough to clarify after this, but, um, my point of that is that this is actually the most residential side of the street. There's no business in the center of the street, it's all businesses.
True.
If I'm not mistaken. Um, and I will have my time not interrupted, thank you. Um, it is not a fully resident, uh, fully commercial street. It is not the center of downtown, it is a tiny, tiny, very tight-knit neighborhood, side street, that happens to have a restaurant at the end and a longstanding actual inn. It's a block, all, there's a handful of homes, this is one of them. The rest are actually lived in by people who do have concerns about parking, they do have concerns about specifically on-street parking that they don't have. So, the parking is an issue. Um, the fact that there is a lot of skirting around the barrier that the council put into this, um, is very disconcerting. The CBA was not aware, uh, I think, of a lot of things, because no one was there in, in opposition in any way. Um, the timing of the applicant, uh, you know, the, the, the piece that was relief of it, failure to meet the timeframe, um, should not have been granted at all. That is a grave mistake on the part of the CBA and frankly, um, really a slap in the face of the city council in the fact that we really did put a lot of time into all of it. And, uh, this applicant was at many meetings, many council meetings, many, many meetings, all along the way, step of the way. Well aware, so I don't really understand any kind of, um, any kind of mistake or misunderstanding or misstep on part of the application being filled out in beginning of March, you know, whenever it started in March, is my understanding. And the application period started in the beginning of the year, so by my estimation, I, I don't, I, there's no good reason, there's not one, not a single one. Um, other than just skirting around the rules. And then we are now, so, to discover that set applicant is skirting around the rules of having not one, but two investor-owned STRUs through semantics. Um, this is a gross overuse of semantics in rules and whatever else is being leaned on. This is not intended by the city council at all. So I hope that you will do your due diligence, please, and consider all that is to be actually considered beyond just what was, um, allowed through the CBA. And that there are residents who live there and, um, unfortunately, they're not able to be here, but they are, they are listed.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? And probably come. Seeing now, as we're looking. Close the public comment and we get back to. The comments or discussions.
Uh, one, one question for the applicant, the, um, planning, planning department has, uh, mentioned a couple of special conditions on this, and you're, are you, you're aware of those and, um, you agree with those as far as maintaining a valid STRU license?
We have that, yeah.
And the fact of, um, maintaining the, the online ads to reinforce the conditions by the ordinance.
Yes.
Mr. Querter, you don't have a license yet.
With the state?
No.
No, to be clear, this is the, to be clear, bearing. Start parking here, there's still the local license.
Yes, we will do that, it's probably yes. Yes.
If you can't get a local license.
No, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I can have the state one, we are.
So just kind of following up, explaining, comment. Again, understand the concerns, um, unfortunately or unfortunately, we have nothing, no jurisdiction at this point over the ground floor use or the, um, or the belief filing. Um, and so we can only look at here, the special permit criteria in the, or this general special permit criteria. And the standards for, um, short-term relevance in the short-term of the unit section of the ordinance. And limited, what we can do. That said, um, I don't know if anybody else had anything before I jumped into this. Um, just, did you something?
So can you just go back to the power of returning?
Yes, that's what I was just gonna give you.
I want to understand, my understanding of what power of returning is.
Right. So when we were, when we were, when this was being with, um, the ordinance set, um, it listed certain things. So if you were the owner of the property, you could, you could be the operator. If you were partner, if, in the owner, in the ownership, you could be, you could be an operator. If you were trustee of a trust that owned the unit, you could be an operator. Or if you're manager of an LLC, should recent of the unit, you could be an operator. In this case, this is none of those things, this is something different. And so what's being proposed is power of returning to somebody who's neither, none of those, has none of those rules. And so, um, right, as I understand it, maybe it didn't come in, maybe it wasn't time to do the, you know, the, the legal review of, of this. So, um, it's unusual. It's, so it's unusual to begin with. It's also anti, anti-disruptive. Not going to get another, this is the only one going to be in the city. Uh, so, so, uh, so it's unusual in that respect. Um, so to me, it seems like there were two directions we could go. One is we could postpone, continue the discussion to another meeting and ask the planning department to come back to this written documentation looking forward here and. Read in some detail. Or we could prove it subject to getting it. And so it seems like there was too much. Um, and so the two, two additional special subject, special conditions that I, yes. One is, um, the, the ordinance says that, um, that that the, the special permit, uh, for a, um, sorry, the special permit shall automatically expire June thirty of twenty twenty-seven and may not be extended by the variance of. So I would like to include that as a special condition, just to reflect, say, that this special permit shall expire on June thirty of twenty twenty-seven. Let's, yeah. Just to reiterate.
To be explicit in this.
Yeah.
Just ask for clarity on. So my experience with power of attorney is that you're granting power of attorney to represent you without actually checking in with you and, and the insert family. So you're saying that you are not the operators of this property and that you've granted power of attorney to somebody else in the operator?
That's right. So the, the property is part of an irrevocable trust. Um, so it is not me, it's actually another entity under the law, specifically not me, I can't have it. Uh, and so it was suggested by the planning department that not only, uh, that that's true. Um, however, that the ordinance says that if that's the case, you can't operate it and have that and another, you know, I can't be the operator, even though I don't own it, I can't operate it because I operate another one. So through power of attorney, this is the operator, period. Um, and that's the reality, that she's been granted operator status to make every decision for the property.
So all the license, everything is in her name?
They had us put the trust as the name when we filled out paperwork, it's the trust and then find the contact and the.
Yeah, you can't, the trust is the proper applicant, um, for this.
Changed that.
It's, it's the same as a person. Um, but it can't speak for itself, and the ordinance suggests I can't speak for it because I operate another one, hence, this is the speaker for it.
So.
I mean, with the, you know. Um, yeah.
So the, so what I was, uh, again, there are two ways to do this, but they don't come back to getting some kind of documentation. And so one way to do would be to say, to, if we, there's a motion to approve it, to approve it subject to the provision of written determination by the zoning enforcement officer, city attorney, city legal counsel. That the attorney in fact designated by the power of attorney is legally authorized to act as the owner of record set forth in the definition of operator, that should be DG two. And further subject to require, the change in the operator should require two. So, so we could either, presuming that we're going ahead. Both, um, we could either move it, subject to that provision, or we could continue it in order to get, get that written documentation in one hour. So I will accept a motion in any type of, if there's, if there's a motion to, to make that provision, I would like to add those addition to conditions.
I'd like to move that we continue to, until we have opportunity to review the documentation that's been satisfied that it addresses.
I'll say an emotion.
Is there any further discussion? Um, do we probably want to continue to a date certain? So we don't, we don't. Do they want to continue to sit down for a meeting?
The decision is that.
I think, I think it should be a simple thing.
Yeah.
So it's not time, you'll have time to.
I don't look at the time right now. But, you can't make it.
Mr. Querter.
Oh, I just say, no, I can't be here that meeting, um. Sorry, I've got a few questions that I'll ask. I'm just, I'm, I'm getting confused about the aspect of, I understand that the home is in an irrevocable trust. But sold that home, where do the monies of that sale go to?
The irrevocable trust.
And the trustee is?
The trustee, I am the trustee, but I cannot take the money, I'd be committing a crime.
I just want to speak, right?
It's, it's not right. You, you can get a legal opinion on it.
Yeah.
Irrevocable trust, it's not the first, that's the idea.
Not the irrevocable trust, just the ordinance. I just feel like this is like a slip.
Yeah. So what is, um, let's take that all the time.
Because he does own one.
Right.
And the home, you purchased this. And then you put it into the irrevocable trust. I just, I guess, I'm just.
We're going to get a little personal, when there was a divorce, the fact that when Keith and his ex-wife were going through their divorce.
Yeah.
Property was put into an irrevocable trust for the. Property was put into an irrevocable trust for the children.
Okay.
So Keith was assigned as the trustee, but it's irrevocable and the children are the beneficiary. So even if we decided to sell it, the money goes back into the trust and the children are the beneficiary. So anything that we do for making money, it goes into the trust and it is for them. Except for like money from the short-term rental is used for maintenance, you know, routine maintenance, we don't do anything extravagant and it's all there. Keith has multiple properties in that irrevocable trust for the children. And that was part of the proceeding that both him and his ex-wife, we two.
So I guess because this is a three-year window and this will not come up. I, I guess I feel somewhat settled about it, but you can see how this could become.
Right, if it were not, if it were not so limited.
If it were so limited, we could see this pop up.
Well, just comment that it would be extreme, most people wouldn't seek to subterfuge by giving away. A property in order to have a three-year Airbnb conducted in it.
That's what I'm saying, because of the three-year, but, but I don't agree that some people would do that for the long game if it was not this three-year window. Be a very good financial plan for family.
I guess it could be, I guess it could be.
Okay, so is there any more discussion about the motion? I mean, concerned, yes, Brian.
Other than procedurally, does it make a difference if I would not be here on next meeting?
Well, it's a good point, we have, we, we have six people here tonight, we have five people or, or actually Charlie could do it. And Charlie and Jeff could go.
Maybe a different.
So is there anybody else who knows? So we'll have at least five, which is enough to hopefully six or seven. No further discussion than all those in favor of the motion? Any appeals? To continue to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next application is the application of former reformer, fixed oil drive for the special permit.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Doing well. Uh, yes, so. Been a resident now for three years. My wife and I are actually dating, we want this house, that would be our star house, got two boys now. And as you guys know, property, property values have gone up a lot and. Interest rates are high right now, so they expand to get a little more room to our house. This is kind of what we're.
Anything you want to add before we get into this?
Um, I guess just to breathe, um, in the general context, maybe if I could just plot a certain. Great for, there's plenty more to, you know, you know, types of issues that are new to this project. We know, just a quick summary, we know that this neighborhood, that some others that, you know, you might see it could be developed in the old, the one that I would reference. Uh, Hollywood Woods, uh, building, I think is, it well, it has a sort of. There are slightly larger lots, they have like. We know. This is a neighborhood, it's right there. But, uh, you know, one, two years. Correct, it would be quite a place. Earlier in the game. So here, essence, he advised the board, originally this. He, um, and it doesn't, but the old, is the planning board has the ability to grant a waiver reduction. We see the developing originally. Open space areas being reserved. The lots are being made smaller in size, and the second act being made smaller in size. And so one of the things that happens is there's essentially a judgment call along the way with the planning board during that initial permit process. As to whether or not the, you know, composition of the spatial engine is still, you know, viable for that neighborhood that's being created in this case. You know, if the board here grants relief, that's, you know, being requested for lots and dimensions. Rather than having to go over the zone for appeal, the bare system to produce those, that's a relationship for the neighborhood. Um, thereby in that process, allowing more of the space around it to be preserved, that's kind of generically sort of what's happening. Um, so here in essence, these are smaller lots in size, tighter, you know, way. Uh, as you sort of drive through that neighborhood, it's obviously here where, um, this is not a change that can be just signed off by staff. See, they're very small, you know, adjustments that can be approved, um, as a minor residential apartment, this is not one of those. Basically going beyond the, um, relief. So it has. Um, in that, it is sort of like a, you know, that is sort of like that. Here we go, if all of it goes beyond that, we'll do that a little further. And so the board has decided to give your okay with that, um, in this, in this prime, that's, that's, it's interior, that's valid. Um, not really affect the public, but you know. But also to consider, you know, what this, if other folks want to do the same. Here in essence, you have, you have to decide, almost as if we're back in the middle part of the process, is this spatial. But, you know, we will. All exactly. Two minor tweaks made to one, lots on the, um, open space side, we have sometimes door drive street. Um, today, I think we're. Somebody else. Yes. There wasn't, I think at the time, there was a process. Plus the effects. Yeah. So back here, this might be, we buy. To reach out and offer a lot only because they give that much, I think, it's already, you know. You did commit at the applicant, it's obviously, we don't have any. Present, uh, but we, we did issue a flag that we definitely don't hear. Or use that. Is there further to actually leave that to me here?
So.
We are, the, our two houses, they exactly where.
You, you remember the public?
Uh, yes.
Also, where do you, where do you look? So, uh, we've had, just to kind of back up, we've had a lot of difficulty getting information. And, um, so if you follow what has happened. This whole area was approved with ten-foot utilities. And, and, um. If your plan shows utility is that, it doesn't match what we. And we have been. I wouldn't say asking, I would say pleading with the developer to come up with. Final as-built plan showing what the easement really are in, for whatever reason we want to. So, um. I have a lot of difficulty with sunroom that is shown as being on top of the easement. That's a, that's, that's a big issue. The other thing was, as Andy said, we have twelve and a half. Here, your normal. And I had understood it, it was actually on the, on the open gap, placehold.
I did, I did.
What's that?
I didn't know what it is.
Late this afternoon.
I have, I uploaded it, smaller, uh, width in terms of, uh, from ten, twelve feet to ten feet.
Um, well. I was looking for.
I put in the attachments just on the general apartment, so. It should be now, thirty-three, twelve foot and stuff, or maybe.
There's no follow-up. There's no follow-up.
Is that, that, it's, yeah. I mean. It doesn't appear that they opposed you, did you?
Yeah, when I went back in there, it pulled up again, so.
Yes. Yeah. And the other, um. So, so that was, uh, a concern, I guess we want to make sure we started, but, um. So I really would, I would like to have. Some documentation of where the easement really is. And, and for the utilities, almost, that's it, if I understood. And so it is wrapping.
Yeah, the electrical comes in off the street, basically parallel with the property line on the back there, it doesn't come through that way. It comes in through the, the.
It comes.
It's marked up there right now because of when they came back the hardline, the downstairs.
So it's coming, it's coming between you and the lot to the north.
Uh, to the south. So it's like where the existing deck is right there, you're looking at that, the property comes in, the power line comes in from the street.
Yes, right, right.
From left to right.
And I knew that, and I, and I knew that because I actually had a, a plan showing underground electric, uh, line. But we, but there was never an easement proposed for that, so, you know, it's one of these things we really have to, it really is.
Yeah, I know, if the ass comes in, uh. North to south, uh, through the front, basically.
So, um. So my concern is because this is partly, you know, on you, but it's really, we, we, to come up with. Information, maybe you have information showing where the easement is, showing documents.
We're not in the registry, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a, it's a problem, I was looking in the registry, they used to try to find it. So, uh. I think we would, we, we can, we can discuss this further. I think there are a lot of questions, are there other questions?
Just, just to clarify. Utility easement is, is the, the loop of utilities.
Yes, sir. Well, it is, it's a loop that was proposed at the time, I think what the opposite says.
That's, that's the easement. It's a connection that does.
Right.
Nice.
Certain is. Do that easement. But in that, all of them.
Yes, yeah, just to protect the other. Yes, oh.
Yeah, and as far as, um, information from any of the neighbors or other. In the documentation, is that the only one that? Submitted? I'm sorry, uh, I have other, in terms of, it was just number thirteen?
There's a letter support. Another one came in. At eleven this morning, yeah. Number, number sixteen.
Again, for us, we have to have the two.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Jamie or Brian or whoever.
Is. Is there, there is an association for this, is there any, anything from the association?
You have a question to the association?
I, I'm one of the trustees, but I, they're all aware of this, why I'm one of the trustees signing the letter that they have in the board. You know, these are, but they have names, I know as well.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I have, I have signed up from the agent.
Okay, so you'll, you'll upload that too?
That should be in there too.
Um, what I see is a letter from you to the reserve, it's your way to Anthony.
Yes, Anthony, Anthony's were aboard.
So it's asking for the opposition, I don't see a letter with the opposition.
Okay, all right, uh, I will, yes.
Just one minor question. Somewhat unrelated, but I'm looking at your site plan. And on the sunroom. And it seemed like there are other changes.
No, this was just, I just pulled this from the plan that we got from the developer, just to have. So when I went and sent them out, the, the architect just used the existing plans that he had in there.
So which is the accurate representation of the data?
Uh. It would be the first, the first page. Yes.
On the site?
Uh. The existing, that, that's where it is right now, it's actually shifted back this way.
So that's, that's different than what's.
Yeah, so it basically where the proposed sunroom is. The corner, the bottom corner of that, the door going out is, that, that is shifted over to the right.
So explain that again?
So the existing deck on the back is just basically, it comes off that bottom right corner of the property, yeah, so it shifted over that way, yeah.
Then there's no stair.
There are stairs, the stairs go the opposite direction.
Yeah, this is a HVAC unit.
Uh, the HVAC unit is, um. Uh, up further, it's on the side of the house where the proposed sunroom would be, I would, I would relocate that. Yeah, I would relocate that back to the back of the sun, off the, off the corner of the house.
It would be good to just get all of this.
Okay, I would, sure.
And I think maybe for clarity. Uh, the revised plan, maybe not include the four plans, I'm not sure what four plans help us.
Um, I would suggest for a little provision that. She will have the other documents. This, you just receive all that. Why people see this.
Yeah, I see, I do it all, so I appreciate it, it means you, you guys can grant me, I just try to, to get plans done for this was. Uh, not inexpensive, but there are more expensive options out there as well, so I've tried to. In the most cost-effective way.
So on the, on the, on this plan. We have the two, um, dash lines. And there's a. There's the word utility easement next to the other.
Yeah.
So is the. I'm unclear what. What the internal, the in, interior. That the.
I don't, that, these were just the plans that. So it's because they most accurately, to my knowledge, represent what the as-built is for our house.
Absolutely, for the locations, but I here, it would be, be to read both of those lines, that need, needs and balance of the easement.
So you're thinking that the easement is bounded by both of those dash lines?
That is based on typical line types, not any.
That's what I can actually see.
Being of that, now, if it means something differently, you know, prepare the plan, or provide the original document, they should have known the plan, but that's how this.
You're right.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand it, I guess what confused me was the fact that the word utility easement was outside.
I, I understand, yeah, no, I'm just taking that into account, yeah.
So just to clarify, so you mentioned the developer, but you, you own the property, does the developer have any other responsibilities? Have they turned the roads over, is that?
Not yet.
Then, well, first of all, the new streets will not be public, this is a singular, uh, private, basically, you know, shared private.
But is it turned over to the HOA or is it?
We received, they turned it over two months ago.
Okay, so then the utility easement would be, if it's a true utility easement, you could get that from National Grid, because what they believe the easement is, is what the easement is, it's not.
Or, or.
When it gets reported.
Yes.
Is that what might be for truck access, you don't know what they.
The presumption here, it's not the same, because, right, the presumption here is this might be a letter, but that could be clarified, I, I could actually, there's a gentleman that have a good. Unusually scheduling.
Well, the schedule plan that they have in the, in the registry, which has been, when it calls.
Yeah, the National Grid plan, they're not the type of plan that we would allow, a lot of accuracy.
Well, I spent all day with National Grid today, they have accurate plans, they have rights and permits group, they know exactly what their rights are, so they don't crack on your property. They don't break, so.
No.
National Grid has, they do have.
The prob, part of the problem is we don't have an as-built. And we've been trying to get. With, with, with this. And with, um, the locations of utilities, a lot of the utilities that were shown on the approved, so there's a plan in special permit. Are not located in the. Yeah, so we really, I think we had a lot of problems getting that information.
And I, and I can see all that, the confusion of what the drawings are, the drawings, but there is a. I would argue that there's a legal document that the utility has, National Grid has, that believes they have rights. And that's the one you could acquire, because that would be the most definitive. If if something was built on it. They would have the legal right to say, no, that's that's an easement I was supposed to.
And so I.
That's also, that's the most clear, because the developer, they can. Anyone can make lines in.
Right, yeah, and so it would be very helpful to have that. And have that transferred to the site and to have the word.
And 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 that's what I'm saying, as the homeowner's property, if you say you. There's an easement there, you have the right to ask them.
Yeah.
Right, that's a direct.
That's right.
Connects between you and. Which might shut someone, now you're grounded in the. Their plan is different than the site is right with with.
Yeah, I think I I all I can say is just some of that, and if I hey, well, I I think National Grid certainly knows where the utilities are, they actually. Line themselves. I have had sort of mixed bag experiences with the accuracy and details of the plan that they have always applied to, sorry, and whatnot, so all I can say is. Well, they certainly can locate the utilities and information there, and they might be easement or some line that or general in nature, give a sketch plan that their preferences with any grant is right for an easement. Um I have not often seen National Grid sell property with the type of plan here that we have, which was like this, so. All I can say is I wouldn't go forward with the assumption that they will be as concrete and clear as we hope. Um and yeah, I just little has something to speak that, you know, we are.
So the engineering plans that you see that you may run into, there there's a legal, there's a whole rights and permits division.
I'm aware.
Right?
Yeah.
Don't happen.
Yep.
Now, it could be wrong, it could be disputed. Alls I'm saying is.
It exists.
Agreed, agreed. I just I think of that information, I I don't know how that information will be displayed is what I'm saying on that plan. So for relating to this, yeah, and this is why obviously you originally assumed the developer itself. They thought by things that. Yeah. This didn't happen here, it didn't seem right, so. All I'm saying is someone will have to translate whatever that sketch is like. To to this plan.
Yeah.
Or we get that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey. As it relates to the site too, I'm sure you know it's.
Yeah.
There's actually two, it looks like there's two like.
Those are for now for Comcast and Verizon to run their uh utilities in the house there, so they ran it by the way, uh basically. On the property principal houses, they're just empty conduit, um obviously being Comcast going through one, there's no Verizon, I don't have Verizon through the other one as well, so. They they basically hug the power line that comes in Main Street.
So that 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 actually kind of answers my next question. Where, do you know where the property line is in relation to the curb, probably, because it looks like that's about eight feet in.
Uh the property line is the markers that we have in the. Pictures that I can get are like they're one and a half off the the property line, basically.
So that, I mean, I think that just goes to show that some precision on where this stuff is is.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll go out to public area.
These are both of the above, same my neighbors as well.
Cool.
As far as um.
Maybe you can speak, identify your name, your name and your address.
Doyle Drive, directly from.
Okay.
As far as, obviously there are challenges with. The easements and stuff, but as far as. Steadic and. Abutting neighbors and taking away from green space, I'm in favor of. Uh some of the.
Uh Thomas McTeague, I live at nineteen Doyle Drive. So I'm, I sort of look right at this backyard area, um. I I don't know what specifics, if you have questions about what you're trying to improve based off of, but. Um I'm fine with how it looks. I don't think it take away from any green spaces, a ton of kids in the neighborhood, so. There's no shortage of that, but with that carrots and stuff, the kids typically are playing. Their sort of front driveway area anyway, so that's not a space used by the kids or utilized by the neighborhood in any great extent, so. Also a favor.
What else? Period public comment or closed public comment? And. There any further discussion, explanation?
That's just just a final question. So the approvals that you've gotten. The twelve foot.
Yes. Yes, and I did put in, which I will try to upload again, what is a. A revision or alternative for a ten foot wide. Uh sunroom, just in terms of, you know, just to go illegal. Going to work in terms of like what I potentially get approved as well, uh to bring that closer to, you know, off the. Uh the setbacks and then away from the property line themselves, just to be able to give some indication of what what my.
Just another question for Andy. It's unclear um. It isn't clear um. So. Terminating. So the way it's written says. Honeyboard of the authority to grant reductions setback. If they determine that it substantially furthers the purpose and intent of this order. Yes.
Yeah, and you're that is, I think, yeah.
And so there says. This district uses the R two dimensional thresholds. May reduce by fifty percent. Then it says twenty five feet over two, twelve and a half. What minimum front yard setback. Proposal. I see. It's a period of this. Twelve and a half foot minimum front yard setback. It should be period, this proposal is. Means on that last line there.
Uh I I want to before this on a committee. The idea here is that the ordinance has language in it that allows people. Said, you know.
Which is all and a half percent.
Probably have to. Just all that.
Yeah.
Well, that, these are the default effect. But not conjecture further. Or allowed to do a going in first, if you find the, you know.
Oh, so so in essence, the way we should read this is to begin with the second. Say the D F L O R B uses the R two dimensional. And they reduce by fifty percent, which gives twelve and a half permanent front yard. And then we say we have authority. Further. If we determine that it's substantially for the purpose of. And that would.
Correct, and I, well, I don't know. So I think there's. Maybe go quite. Um but, you know, yes, things are. All the way, so I I don't know whether the. Given that we sometimes have. I feel that we would have been treating something here that, you know. When we evaluate. Here, uh I think it just may point here is that. Well, the one might have perceived even going to twelve and a half feet, which is the fifty percent that's actually codified by the ordinance, as being sort of like. You know, based on that's reasonable, right, that's okay, it might be reasonably because it's classified, they weren't in. Going lower than that. Changes going beyond that, really should come back for it, unfortunately evaluate by its own. Uh you know, whether that will help with that, you know, in the context of the bar, it really, you know. Your dissection sort of uh uh what are there, but it's also saying you can't.
So just one more question that's very basic. If the applicant was proposing it at twelve and a half. But. Would they have to read for us?
Um well, the bottom line, I guess, the zoning administrator could have to make a determination for this, we'd rather do, um and should we do typically consult in a situation like this? Uh my indication and suggestion would be actually for the board to do it, uh the context is a big up project, uh would be that's. So you know, it's a type of neighborhood, right, so. Um and while there are the big, there are main, this way we would be. Going to, but um but I think because the tightest the neighborhood, I think um the context here, because the side of the offices, they're going to remain as direct here. Yeah, I I would not probably pull up with it as that. Right back.
So still it's be a special permit or even even if it were within.
This is where where the question is coming to me, I would write it back to the board, uh only because of the entire nature of this. All of it, it's all, it's their quality of the.
Yeah, I understand, but I just didn't know whether, you know, actually whether there was a. Clear line.
There's not a clear line. Yeah, and that's why, um you know, we're. We sometimes think a little more. Usually you gotta be reading more attention, that is why modern. But there's a line where we just we try to get reference. The boards, you know. Where it's really just not readable to expect. Well, like normally in the case of like a another department, in that, you know, like for this, everything that was being proposed, project, and then they give it. Deal. Uh and and someone came back. Use all of this. My. Minor. No, Jamie doesn't believe it. We might do that minor fee as being a. You don't. If it's going. I will. For, I can't see how the board. So this might be a bullet that happens. You want to be honest. Be an option, I might be the board, what the sound. You hear that this. Um, you know.
And and would that change if another applicant, another homeowner came in? And asked for. A sunroom.
If you're saying that. Same sort of.
Wouldn't be a precedent, so if they would, you said they did it before and.
So that that's why I say, again, I don't. The figure. I think frankly, this. All of this, we got a variety of different neighborhoods. You need a proper fact, you know. They're making closer. You know, that's okay, um so that's why partly the homeowners, obviously, you know. For side views. You were the authority originally approving, you know, the what. All ultimately includes. The every product. These are all examples of those, these. The uh well, the open space areas. All of the relationships of the structure. Which is. Case to be private.
Yeah, and I'm more focused on this particular H O A, so now we're deciding something, we're gonna modify. reduces a setback.
It's only five minutes slot, right, so the question.
You know, you're.
No, I'm seeing there's been, since the developer has sold any other uh owners have built some rooms and other, you know, uh additions on in this property as well. Just on the outside of the. The way that this is developed, so we're on the inner circle, which are smaller lots, the outer outer circle part of this has longer lots, so.
So in those cases, that. What I'm trying to figure out is the precedent, and how how do we approach it, that's the question.
Yes, just to be clear, I have heard this argument, I think I've heard. More recent. Um but I believe that some of those is what addition added after the developer. Those might be instances in which they were, there was. Reference on like you allow, you know, so some of those may not be coming to the board here, so it's. A little bit actually have a trigger to come to you because they were. Wasn't after.
And we had, we had two things that came to us. One was the. Sponge.
Yeah.
And the other parts. Deck that was enclosed.
Yes.
And and it wasn't. They're both on the backside, third, the open space. Only the pool where the back of the open space.
Right. I think so, apparently. These are. Looking at those. Lot the open space area.
And you also, in the case of the pool. We caught something. That hadn't been, it was, it had been allowed, it was built, it wasn't, it didn't kind of wasn't.
In that case.
Yes.
Yeah.
What did you have?
See, it was like when we were building the house, a sunroom was. We opted on to at the time, just because of go over spending a lot of our degrees as well, so we didn't think. The. Our thought was, okay, once we get that, bro, you know, it's, you know, moved in, everything else like that, and so we considered a couple of years as well too, so. That was part of our bill sheet, and. We thought, no, this.
No, I appreciate that, and I I'm just trying to get a scope of how we do it here.
Yeah.
Right, so that it's really, you know, often what happens, you know. You approve something, and then somebody comes in six months later and says, well, you improved that.
Yeah.
Why don't you prove that one? And they're not always quite the same, they're similar. And then the fact that you have an H O A, at least you have some governance that says. You know, what's what's allowed. That's that that's the way you put it, but I was fascinated with that discussion about what's the fork in the road where it comes.
Right, right, and and I'm sorry, each of these, those are these a little bit different, right, you know. Uh in terms of like, I think we know, it's, you know, impressive, like how that's. So only would we basically add maybe one modification for a lot, but it wasn't like. Edition, I don't recall, but there wasn't really much that's happened with that at all, and in the case of Evergreen, we actually had a very detailed discussion about the whole, you know. Next one to. So. Be sort of like. This one here.
Okay.
One thing. When there's. Just to ask, uh in terms of the. Front, you know. We're saying that applies to both elevations that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, two things that might be helpful to clarify. One is if anyone knows, including you or any. If, because some of these out, some of these did have. One was a deck. Do do we know for sure, yes or no? If the developer put. Gave you the option, if they have the approval to do it.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find out too, um I. I'll be very transparent with you. I think that they put them on the bill sheets for that purpose, but then they that they only for the outside part of the development. Just to be very clear with you guys, that's something that we learned.
And what you what you show on this plan. Is almost identical to what is on the crew site.
Yes. Yes.
So that's, that's, you know.
But we we were unaware of that, in our bill sheet, which I'm assuming is the bill sheet that everybody got. These were your options and stuff, so in that bill sheet was a sunroom. Yeah, and the difficulty here, I think the two things have been difficult, maybe perhaps, what is more on the city side, which is that we have seen some things that were built were different than originally approved plans, which was deviations in the development. Right, fortunately, so on the project. Um that, you know, we may wish along the way, that we also, uh um and I think perhaps we're seeing here, and this happens with other developments, you say. Where it might be that the developer is representing something that is either approved or reliable and so forth. And unfortunately, that's not a vote that we sometimes hear from, you know, we've been told this, this is the case, we have, actually not the case, that we, that that's not according to the record to be on the file or. Uh or if I was specifically not very most important, so. Um but unfortunately, there might be, you know, a disconnect between what's made by the city versus what, you know, the bill sheet for the homeowner, and you, and the units. Versus what might have actually been by the city, so I can't, uh I might have to call it each and each lot where those things are approved. See, it's been Jennifer, was the fact that the outside properties would have that were. Viable to get those built uh through the permitting process, the people, myself included, on the inside or not because of losses.
So a follow-up question for you, and because you were willing to go down, and be, and you may or may not have to anyway because of easement issue, right? Did you consider doing what at least one other neighbor did, which is using the deck area and doing that?
So.
Because it's a lot easier to kind of.
Yeah.
Vision or or allow even a side yard setback that's quite narrow compared to the front.
So the reason I wanted to do on that side is that that's the street side, and then I have another neighbor behind me, and that's the property with that. Is the fourteen F B, and then their property starts there, so we would be technically even closer to the house behind us, if I'm going to do a sun. The back of the house, so you can see it there.
Oh, and they're very.
And they're very close as well, too, so that's why I thought on the street side there, which if you're looking at it, is on your left hand side. Uh I said there was some stuff. Yeah, so that's where it is there, so that's why I wanted to build it off that side, which is basically. If you consider it, that's my front yard, side yard, you will, putting it there. Uh and then Danielle lives in that house right there, and Andy lives in that house right there as well.
I live on the. The one that.
Yeah, that one's the bottom. Andy lives in. And the top, right, but yeah. Thinking just in terms of we went off the back, then I wouldn't have any backyard either, too, I have two young kids and just for the fence up. Uh I need to be able to corral them somewhere, so. Uh that's why I wanted to be able to put it off the side to get. Give us a little bit.
So um. We already asked you to come back for information.
Sure.
Um and the information, I've written that, maybe some others. One is, you know. Some detail about easement. Including where it is on the site. What it says. Uh the second thing is adding your option with the ten foot setback. You know, try to be.
Yes.
And and with that, I. Um. I don't know. Looks as if. That would still be within the.
Yes.
Look at that issue.
Yep.
And then the third thing is getting your HOA.
Yep.
Uh so. I don't know if anybody else has anything else they'd like to see. But if if we, if those are the things they wanted to see, what would be reasonable given to. Uh, to come back to this.
I can get that. I mean. I think I would ask you for your contact national grid to see if I can, you know, go up there and find that information. Uh, these are two documents I could have tomorrow.
Okay, so so we could. In that regard, uh, continue this to this.
Sure. Okay.
And I'm sorry.
Possible, um, before the content. We do we know? Need for like a struggle. Certain backup wouldn't necessarily.
We haven't seen it, so we don't know.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
And I think we really need to know that the, we, we help.
Well.
Yeah, because if if we, so so we have a. So if we had a ten foot. So we are. Here, here. You know. We're not, there's a little bit of.
Yeah, because they were two feet over this, basically.
So so we, I mean, I think the thing is, we were. If we thought, if we thought, if the ordinance says twelve and a half feet. So and then we're talking two and a half feet. Intrusion that don't be rather. Fourteen. So I think that's.
Oh, not that I have. I just wanted to make. Back, but.
Right, come back.
Yeah.
I wanted.
I don't know. Concerns about. Uh, if they, if they were to come back with. Yeah, again. Assuming that it's it's legal according to easement. Assuming the HOA. Is there a concern about asking to? I assume you don't. So, uh, was there a concern about having to come back to the next meeting? Or to be of other concerns beyond that? Right? As I say, I I don't know.
Oh, sorry, it wasn't. Not even the other need for. Yeah.
Well, seems like, it seems to me like the big question, I mean, the plan is done. From the plan.
Yeah.
They, you're going to get the HOA. Um, so the the thing that we do, the only thing that could cost time and money is getting the information on easement.
Yes, and then I just would have them. As we discussed, it's either if I can get it from National Grid or I can get it from the developer, it's what the ad built is. I don't, and you even said yourself, you're having trouble getting that information. So. I just wouldn't want to put that on title either, you know?
So I guess what I'm thinking though is if. If we came back and the and the easement line removed closure in the street, we had less.
So can I just ask, just for the applicants, because there's a potential miscommunication. I don't think there is, but just in case, just so there's not. You said ten feet. Do you mean you're building back to eight feet or?
No, I pulled the the width of the four sunroom from twelve feet wide to ten feet.
See, that's the.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question.
Because that's, that only makes the easement eight feet, and that's what I was worried about with this communication.
Yes.
And that might still not.
Yeah, because if I, if I were eight feet off the easement, it would only be like a. Five O Y. Sunroom, which would be cozy.
Uh, well, I was. I was interpreting it as intruding in the use.
Yes. But you're saying going to be four feet in to two feet over. So to the potential, so now they're going to be still four feet in the east, not two feet. When you said two feet into the east, what's what triggered me? Like, I think we might be miscommunicating.
Okay, maybe, I'm sorry. I don't know where that line is actually. Right, that's, because actually that line looks like it's.
Yeah, there's no markers. There's no indication of what's with the, or that is.
But it looks to me, I mean, there is no indication, but it looks to me like the easement line goes two thirds through that twelve foot. With, which I mean, there's four feet to the right of. Plus six feet makes ten feet. That's, that's how.
You're talking about eight feet or slightly smaller residential room. Is that even work?
No, I'm saying we have. If we can figure out if there actually is a utility easement there, and if if I were still being the the width of the sunroom ten feet instead of twelve E Y.
Uh.
And say.
Okay.
It's all. Right, and it's there. Set back. Me too. So those three things basically is that if there actually is even a utility easement there, yes or no? And then if it is, if I'm being comfortable proving that I'd be two feet over instead of four feet over. And or now being, uh. Six feet off or eight feet off of the twelve and a half foot setback as opposed to.
You're suggesting that the whole quick dimension shown on the plan would be reduced to ten.
And the distance from the building.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
And the threshold issue is still where's where's he? Like, we have to, we just have to know that.
No, I, yeah, I mean, like you said, we, I don't have the ad built. If I had a red tree deeds in the Cooper, I'd say, hey, this is where the easement is. Said it was there or not there, that would be a much easier decision than knowing if it is or is there. So.
So first, what is the words? Delusion. I would, I would move that we continue this, uh, the information is.
Yeah.
I was gonna suggest that. That's only, only the concern about that.
Yeah, easement, yeah.
I think what Andy was saying. By the location. No easement, and I get the HOA letter. A window for be potentially proving that, or is it not worth it?
So, um. And and for me at this point, it is. Need to know. But I don't know. On that question.
So 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 what you just said again?
If I say contingent on me getting those notifications and uploading, so. Uploading plans that show that the sunroom width is from twelve feet to ten feet wide. That the utility easement is or is not there. And then the third one being approval from the HOA. If those three things were in a lead in agreement, is there any, um? Is there anyone here that would object to that?
And I guess the, the, the basic question is. Is is a summer. Except.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I get to valid question. I just, because we essentially have you be deciding that at the second meeting, if we already know that that wouldn't be viable, we can conceive that. Or, you know, if the easement is gone, it's not relevant. If you're not okay with it, it seems better to mitigate now the setback when it's on the application.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing that comes to my mind is that. If in that unique condition, if there are other units that can, would be possibly. Agreeing to other properties in that area that want the same.
This is, this is a decision only for the typical law. I understand if there was, um, in in other reasons, again, I don't know, like, one of them uniquely, whether or not they were like classification with other, you know, deckers. Here it's approval, but here in essence, we'd be routing it, and they like that back, you know, that's.
Correct, but you know how it works. Someone comes in with the. The next property and says, like, I want an eight foot and I just approved it here.
Yes.
The question is, it's the eight foot.
Yeah, I, there's not a legal precedent. There's certainly the discussion about whether or not that's spatially oppressive, and then, you know, or not given the board might find that equally reasonable of another block if they're going to use apples to apples.
Right.
But each of these lots is a little bit slightly different, and in ancient, then you still would have to be, you'd have to complete authority and would have to make that decision uniquely on that occasion.
I think I'm the only other resident. And I don't.
Well, it's not just the sun, it could be somebody who wants to.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I didn't look at, I I was thinking about that too. There there are, I think, three or four on Coby Park Lane that don't do that. But I think that would be an even higher standard than an internal brick. So I, this is one of maybe only two that possibly could have something like this.
It is private.
Yeah, apparently the nature of the street is adjacent. So Coby Park Lane, I would. What the greater concern to that.
Yeah.
I think it's. But I still, but we, no, I'm likely confused. With another, and that's, you're right, that's, that's all.
It's not, it's no goal.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a lot.
If you look at the other houses that are inside the circle. Uh, the two other ones are basically the same size as the bigger houses. I'm. One of Andy and I actually share the same floor plan when we're at the same house, and then the two, the house behind me and the house left of Andy are, yeah, affordable as well. So. I don't think anybody else, unless. You know, here. He's actually a bigger.
Your motion?
I'd love to continue to the day.
Any further discussion of the motion? Okay, all those in favor? The post. We'll see you in.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for bearing with.
Lower.
Last formal item of this is the approval of the July seventeen. Meeting, uh, the, uh, I submitted a couple of. Uh, edits and other edits.
Okay, for the minutes.
Second. Um, all of it. And the. Yes, same. So, uh, we have. Three in favor? Four in favor? And there it finishes. Okay. Danny. If you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Jeff. So just a couple of quick updates. Units, um, I'll be back to like, keep that really right at the moment. Um, the, I think it might. But the state legislature have approved the horrible homes act, so be there. They say why allow purchasing dwelling units because of standards. So. We, like a lot of the committees, have to update our local workers to be compliant or consistent with that. You're using. We have the core balance, largely in. In the expansion of four year industry. Uh, that was the formal of public hearing. Um, the A D U piece, the existing dwelling in its age, we now have the data, it's like lower than two, uh, space. To allow a little more. Basically updated by that stat. In addition to something, being something that we discussed here anyway, which is, um, having a greater variety of passing out. Or, you know, you know, the smaller units or. So that's something that I just want to mention. Issue for you in the. Just because there are four hundred. In a lot of cases. Yeah, I guess. You will. Set back. Still, why? Uh, the. So you also have. Yeah, but, um, however, it's not the use that's really a question, right? We buy it large in the D A. Um, if there was sufficient there. You, but this might be more. We'll get. Updating. Yeah.
Sorry, Paulie.
No, no, please.
Is there a sense of this will be, uh, modified in districts other than R one?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, just to be clear, the statute really is applying to any district or single family allowed, not just because R one is like the boss.
Right.
It's not entirely district, it wasn't allowed. So we're single family.
So any district or single family allows, yes.
Cool. And, you know, but there are, there are a couple of references that is on the. Yes, I would not, but those are also, you know, that I hear. Uh, the C can go beyond that, wasn't part of the statute, but we have to at least, which we.
Right. Great, thank you.
And in fact, I thi- I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think that. Even in the. At the answer residential therapies. We'd be able to create an accessory dwelling unit by several.
Agreed, agreed, yes, sorry. Station related, if it's not like be allowed to be. Although immediately sitting connected, although, you know, everywhere doesn't replace the dimensional.
So I think what, what the big change would be, and I actually have a quick discussion, but. I think that when we go to a single family to a two family. Changes the financial standards. But in this case, going to a single family to a single. Especially for. Just the, you know, the single family. So it actually allows more intensive. It was, it's, it's not in terms of buildings.
It is, yes.
And that, and that is. That is by right and correct.
Uh, this is a cadaver, I guess, perfectly. I can accept you doing it.
For a larger.
For a large. Right, unless stripping.
So if you were out of West Ham. We could, we could create an accessory community. Because it's fifteen hundred square foot. Accessory. Especially.
Right, that right.
And it's all.
Yeah, yeah. So somebody could take. A big rock. Converted to accessory. Yeah, yeah, I think we had that. And so, so we've got. Uh. Eighty users.
Yeah, eighty zoning, obviously, at the end of the day. Well, I did also mention, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, beside of what is. Uh, but I'm having here the. No, obviously, um, to having an event basically that is a. Large. So, uh, September eleven would be basically a form of kind of the overall. She's like, more formally, it'd be a bit easier to be settled. The fall process totally, uh, but this, uh, forum is basically gonna recap a little bit. So. This is the bottom line, and it also. State legislature. Bees is is communication to say, you know, it was reduced. Strategy, right? We also have the, uh, the need to have a group like. City and approved by the state in order to be sort of. We use. We made up. You want to be able to. Do like. Council, um, will be. You see, what we were. Didn't see us. So, uh. In a lack of. He's gonna begin. All those. New process, but the quick strategy of like how we could try to. This phase forty two begins a year to, you know, you know, to make progress. So that's summary. So essence, uh, the forum is to go over some of that background. Uh, update people, the public, and also councilors and all, session, uh, understand all those pieces, um, understand where going. Let's say, um, the A D U, even if, you know, even if. Do these, yeah, yeah. Um, and then we'll have the, okay, you know, like. I'll let where we like. We use the spring, this is, you know, the lower will be there. Although but this stuff there. Do a bit. Um, and there might be some other pieces there where we talk about. Uh, but it's largely the way the ground gives context to those. Series of things that are being done. Where we even, you know, we had every day communities and we had a lot of this. Was only just being like. It's worth to be doing that though. Also. Yeah, he has to do with that. I am going to be invited. To join and because of the points are there, so uh, we have to go through the whole. And join us, so uh, at any rate, if you're willing to come back. We'll be invited to that, uh, that place. Will be on you for a while, but like. And and the other thing I did want to mention was the uh, the whole is is what is happening. Or the. So. Just if you want to take a look, just go to this. Age. Here. The first one you're gonna see there would be like it's two, this. Have you been talking about. While it's a lot of stuff. But at the first, you'd be able to go to the principal that did that to the R P, so uh, you'll see on that page, the R P. Uh, I just don't know whether the certain. Community to get there, so um, Brown School, R P, you'll see the R P and so. You know, those. Issue there. Uh, so and then the um, and then the three proposals we got from C S I and, you know, team. Uh, say that a team, why don't you say. Each of those, if you want to review them, the reason I point them here is even though. Star, we've been largely talking to the city council about disposition of city property and that's. Council of Mayor. Uh, this, you know, people did disposition of property with the future, you should be there. It will also be a zoning discussion I imagine here because there is no related today, but it's possible to break through that typically. Why, so why don't you do my heads up? At times, you know, review what's in this package here, not only look at the Brown. But also to uh, look at these proposals and get a little bit what's there. Not to say what it is. What are the usual data. What?
It's hoping, I guess, I think in other words.
Yeah, I mean, it's. Yeah, a lot of good things are gonna happen.
Yeah.
So that as well, just, you know, that's a adjust, that's why. Look at this again, before we got into it, you'll have.
The other thing is. The eighteen drink over here.
Oh, yes. You, so. Uh, the one that we had. Kmart, the uh, the city hearing was Kmart.
Yeah.
He bought, he bought. Exactly. That. Somebody with the C. Here, um. Yes, it's here, um, that I will see how both. The name, um, um, will be our. I don't know, there will obviously be some, uh, there'll be some sort of rubber and notification. You know, that is owning, uh, probably legal, that's all the basic feedback or or another. There is a discussion. He brought this. There is a discussion. Whether the project, they, what do you mean, file? Is something. So we're not sure yet whether it's on what feels, whatever. Nation or project here, or whether the planning work. Yeah. Process, we have to be here, we report. They are going. The plan. Yeah, so I don't think. When we have the T E A. But if they were to be filing. Yeah, so you would not necessarily say that project. I don't know, because. But this more really are. You, 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 that you have to say about. So there is gonna be a discussion about. It's a. Right, that they're probably. Yeah, yeah. Yes, plus to go to the D A. Essentially a consolidated operating. Dissolidated that. Basically look at the. Way of this. All that stuff is combined with one hearing there, so I'm mainly letting you know so you can, you know. Be as clear as possible, looking at. Uh, be aware. Dangerous yet, be aware of the development group, may play role. But be, but may also be a document or a goal with a zoning, uh, component, what I'm sure that. But they should be, um. It it is important, it seems to me, based on. If even if there's a zoning that happened from that, they still be important. So. City, that is for lack of a better explanation, you know. Insulated from the statutory provisions of the zoning act or. These actions, which can provide access to holes or what we need provisions. If you're, if we are concerned about. But. You might want to realize. He brought. Well, where. Or immediate going. Development group.
So like, just a couple of things in that, um. In the, if you go to our meeting, um, agenda on the eighteenth, you'll see the draft ordinance is. It has been submitted. But my understanding is that there may be revised ordinance that happens for the.
Uh, I have not last. But anyway.
So it is, it it, it's kind of, so the other thing I want to say is. Some of us have seen. The, the applicants proposed, proposed.
Uh, I believe all the members here.
Has everyone seen it? What, what, what context did we see?
I said it up.
Oh, you decided. But good actually to have posted. I don't know if it made sense.
Oh, yeah, sorry, and I actually. Part of what I think. Speak anyway, and there is not a. Um, from that, but that was one question, but is there a. And if the. So that's the details of what the reference is all agree on to the better. D V A or.
I think that it would be helpful. In preparation for the clinical therapies.
Yeah.
Which is a. Uh, um, to look at plans. In comparison to this.
Yes.
Currently, so it's, it's, you know, it's, it would be helpful to. Get a sense of what it'd be and then they can go outside and and look at it and imagine what would be there.
Yeah, Jamie, yeah. Yeah, just, first procedurally, I mean, are we being shocked for the kind of. It's developer might like it and they don't like it, they're gonna be like, is that the kind of. Is that the.
I can't speak for them, but anyways, that they would prefer, you know. They probably prefer whatever path is the streamlined rather than to get to a private, that, you know, order magnitude or scale nature. Um, and I imagine that, you know, from a procedural nature, you know, we see this catch with zoning, those can be, you know, take a while, it can be difficult, they can be less than that. Um, there may be a thought that, you know, asking one person to be comfortable with just speaking with a plan and, you know, saying what's that, and one word. Proper thing consolidated, might be easier than debating with a lot of counselors, a zoning change and, um, that the other party. Well, so I assume that there's a sense, you know. Uh, that, I guess, streamlined path is, they can, they can be presented well as a project, what the city meaning. It's reasonable for the city, um, but the city, you know, everybody here has their own role as. Of what we play and what we. Um, so.
But to your question, a specific question. The ordinance that is for. At this point. Was written by city councils, not by the applicant, that stuff in it that is totally contradictory.
Right.
So I don't think. It's, it would be nice if, yeah. This something, because I don't think, you know, we don't know what the conversation. Between.
Which lines are. Yeah, going back to, but here the conversation officially started. Something has to change, right? I'm pleased initially from that, but, you know, what if it was working up something above the four yard difference, right? It was something along those lines, meaning there's an asset right that you use openly, mainly with, you know, mixed use. But the plan would become the review authority with designer, right? That was kind of the general concept. It migrated to what. I obviously have a larger. Thing. You just put up a day, a day, a day, so. I thought. Soon they can fit consolidating with one, you know, uh. Be more efficient, timeline, you know.
Yeah, but there's a, this negotiation. I mean, it doesn't.
There's a, yeah, there's certainly is a negotiation. And clearly, you know, it's. I just, you know. You know, whether or not something is open, one body or another, you know, is it just exactly right? And then the, the D A, um, the councils feel like if this was only been bypassed, I guess, part of the reason why it's been zoning proposed is. It might be an extension of this, you know, parallel against something to work, but might also be a concern that some tech. So this is a interesting combination of things, because the statute also allows the applicant to protect and we go right to the Z B A now. I mean, but this project doesn't need the metric letter from or funding to be technically that, well, it could be made with the Z B A without that. Um, it's just something that, you know. And, and. There's fair part, you know, we're looking to get the best possible of the city overall with.
The concern I is. This, this site is a very large part of the overall story of. And what really worries me about all of these discussions. Is that piece merely the process? And you've got two city councils writing in the zoning. Why is really only. And, and we don't have an idea about. The broader story. Context really wants to be, and I think this is a. Very problematic moment right now. What is being proposed is a very large. On this site, it will impact the entire district. And we're not talking about anything. Allowing. The discussions to be only about. And I, I just, I think we're headed down. We should be ahead of this process and we should be talking about. All this. It's it, because how, how do you have a discussion about, we think there needs to be retail on the ground floor? With this building, because it is what supports a mixed use district and it supports a street environment, a pedestrian environment. Also, what's in front of us has no retail. In fact, it has residential. Um, on the sidewalk next to the, to the existing retail section. So there are all kinds of things like that about this proposal that are gonna just, you know. Get glossed over. And we won't be able to do anything because we don't know about how this building relates to an overall concept. And, and I'm really concerned that this is gonna be fast tracked. To a conclusion that isn't what the city is really. Right now, it's a building that does not look like it. It's very large, it's very generic, and it does a lot of things at its edges that, that don't do what we're. So I just, I, I really am concerned. And if this goes in the direction of a friendly forty B. It's entirely a negotiated agreement, none of that stuff.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I said.
Really concerned. No, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, as planned, we potentially get to be pawns in this whole thing, but we have one moment in time to perhaps make a mark. We, we've got like one flash moment to make a mark and we just should be really careful and use it as wise as we possibly can, otherwise. Well, it'll be completely out of our hands. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for those who are interested in timeline, that's. There's clearly just, if you will, a different sense of, you know, what the timeline should be here between different, you know. Or, I mean, those who are willing to. Or area or. Which why, you know. Issues, um, things like that, so these are pretty, you know, extreme amount of density in one slot versus the rest. Okay, people need to go, um, or, um, what. Is this a lot of. These are our designs. Deciding based on. On criteria. Yes. You know. Whether or not. The office.
But the foothold that we could have, so I'm just trying to hear, we have like next to know. This, but. But the little bit that we have is that we have the need to have a vision or express a vision to what a larger. Right? We can't necessarily control this from our soul, but we can actually influence what the discussion is about the district as a whole. And we maybe, this is an opportunity for us, which is gonna be very fleeting. And it's very easy to miss it if we don't. I mean, I think we should talk about this at our next meeting, I guess, is my point, I'd like to come to the next meeting with some thoughts, because I think we need almost like a bear. For the eighteen, in a way that we've never done before.
Yes, I, I see this. An argument about, you know, what this particular ability is.
So how might it fit into something like.
These are the reasons why we're.
And we actually, now that we have, um. Several things agenda before. It's gonna be a hard extended one, I know that. You have.
Be at the end.
Was that?
They'll be at the end.
Well, um, well, we can think about how we're gonna see agenda. But maybe, maybe we should. You know. If you guys could get together, I don't know, we, we could have some kind of. As, as you say, come with some thoughts. Work together regarding. Yesterday, everything, you know. The stuff at the harvest. And there are some thoughts in there, but it's not enough to get, to get us to. But maybe spend a little bit of time with your back support. I was, um, I think so, so, so we don't come to a meeting and say, okay.
Yeah, and we could say, like, we have a really elegant statements and, and. Hard to be as persuasive as possible, still be completely ignored, but at least we'll. Yeah, you know.
It'd be good to be prepared for a meeting in the fourth, so it can be. And maybe even the housing part. All right. Anything else you maybe would like to say about that or anything else?
Move to adjourn?
Say.
All of them. Can be any horse special on the floor?